Meeting is called to order. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying the retrospect as well as posted notices in Barrow Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Alhambra Bingham School, Grace Daring School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. We will save the pledge for our public meeting. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Dare. Ms. Phoebe. Mr. Buckhorn.
Present.
Ms. Davidson.
Present.
Ms. Farrey. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Torillo.
Here.
Ms. Spaulding.
Here. Also present, Mark Iannucci, Superintendent Earl Vasallo, Interim Business Administrator, Sean McCarron, Supervisor of Percolant Instruction. That is it for right now.
Assistant.
Excuse me?
I'm the business consultant.
Oh, excuse me, business consultant. I'm just reading what's here.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Business Consultant. At this time, we are open for any public comments on agenda items only. Anybody have any issues or concerns at this time? All right, if not, move on to Policies and Public Relation.
As we talked about earlier, I want to say it was the last meeting that we talked in April. We met Strauss Esme right before that last meeting we had. You can suspend Policies 0131, as you see there, regarding the two reading policies.
Okay.
Since we have the bulk, I kind of told you this throughout the year about policies and everything, that there's, we look behind you here, sifting through this stuff. It's been an arduous tour, sure, with the board office staff, I appreciate all your help, so we were going to suspend policy just for this meeting.
I remember that, Matt.
And then, you know, moving forward, like next month in June, we're gonna have some more policy for the first reading, and again, always wanted a second reading. But tonight, since you got these two substantial policy books, Strauss Esme sent these late last week. We took that a couple more days than they originally had thought, so we're gonna suspend that policy, or excuse me, that, yeah, the policy, and then, you know, talk about these policies, any questions you have. I'm sure I have some things that I'd like to bring out, or just bring some stuff up. There's no set, like, script here.
Okay.
I just want to kind of, you can go bylaws, and then go to zeros, go to one thousands, two thousands, three thousands, and hopefully at the end of that, you can have a motion and have those approved, which will be effective, and then we'll be off to date.
Sure.
Before you start discussing it, you're gonna have a motion and a second to open up discussion, and then at the end of discussing all the policies, is when you then do the roll call.
For number one.
Which is?
For all of them. So we have to, do we have to have a motion?
You're gonna have a motion and a second to open discussion, and then you can discuss everything for as long as it takes, and then you do the roll call.
Just do this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so at this time, so we can get started, since there's no public comment, I need a motion to approve item number one under Policy and Public Relation.
I'll make that motion to approve that number one.
Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Now we'll go into questions.
Okay.
Who's supposed to be the little background, the work sheet to work on, close to Mr. Strauss Esme?
Okay.
I wanted to, they originally sent us a book that just had our policies. Naomi was, had just happened to break back her book that had some policies and regulations we had already approved. When they did the audit, I want you to also be aware, there's many more pages to that audit that we had in place and voted on in 2009 that have not been updated since then. So we had a lot, we're gonna re-vote on everything, and vote on it as a book, then to pick out every little piece. They had me narrow the regulations and the policies down to the
What's we have?
piece that you have now, that is what we had to look at. There have been updates done that we hadn't updated. Some of them are brand new policies because of the teacher evaluation change and other things that changed for the students, so in, I think a lot with the athletics and different things. So that's what you had there. Some of them are brand new policies, that's like, the SCA, the Strauss Esme adopted, that's when they got them, that's their policy. The other was our board might have adopted them, but after we adopted it, there was changes in the policy. So that's why we had, and that's why we're where we are. They then sent us these with all the updates in, that we have to, they're gonna get the date in them and all that. Some of them that we approved, when we gave them to them, we actually went through, once you got your book approved in 2009, and we went through every board meeting, the policies were approved, and we looked for them. Some of them we found with dates on them, some of them we could not even find, so that's what we're doing here. We had them, they're approved, you approved them, they had the updates, they just had everything on their computers. So they've gotten everything, so we at least have a hard copy of that.
And, you know, you want to be sure, we're in a big policy-driven district, we don't want to be caught to something that comes up.
Right.
We don't have something blazing in the air where they ask us to send it the right way, if not, again, not the playing game, right? We just want to make sure that this day, this day on, we have it. They've done a great job getting stuff to us, but, you know, it's a bit of a risk, please.
So question, so we'll go through policies, and then we'll go through regulations? Is that what we're gonna do?
We're gonna go, so this policy audit summary, if we take that out, maybe we'll go like section by section, like Mr. Iannucci said, does anyone have any questions on bylaws? So that would be the zero, the zero, does any, did anybody have any questions there? No? Okay, how about administration?
Do you have a copy of that organizational chart, the first one?
Yes.
We just gave that to you, and that's obviously, if you're on that orientation handbook, we talked about this before.
Right.
Similar, or just like, same, means the taste of it, just a different format, reports to who? So, Mr. Buckhorn, sorry if I interrupted you there.
No, 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 not at all.
Now, how did this change from what was, I knew you said you didn't want the way the chart was set up.
It just didn't flow to look like, like, certain people reported to people they don't report to, like, the support staff reported, the certified staff, it just, like, it looked like the way, like, the instructional aide might report to a teacher who reports to the principal, so we just kind of branched everything out, so it kind of squares off like that.
Does anybody have any questions there? Besides that, Mr. Buckhorn, did you have any other questions?
Yes, I have, I have, one, two, three, four, five, six of the policies I have questions on.
Are they under administration?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not all of them, but yes, I have some. The first one would be
Do you know what number Chad?
Yes, Policy 1140, Affirmative Action Program, there, it's just a thought in the handbook that we put together, and if the majority doesn't feel as important, fine. But if you read the second paragraph, it says the Affirmative Action Team shall develop the Comprehensive Equity Plan. I'm just going out, do you think we should have
Policy or are you in regulations?
A whole policy. Policy. Where it reads, they develop, the team develops a comprehensive equity plan. Does the board need to have a copy of what that equity plan is, so we understand what their goals and objectives and actions are? It's a question, that's all.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the policy on affirmative, affirmative action program. On the back page, the second paragraph reads, the affirmative action team, they have to have a team.
Right.
Shall develop a comprehensive equity plan that follows New Jersey law. Do we feel, do you feel we should have in handbook for board members, a copy of what this comprehensive equity plan is? It's just a question.
Yeah, that's easy.
I was just curious.
That can
But does it necessarily have to be in the handbook? Does it, can that there be a reference as far, because if you start doing that, then every time some kind of thing comes up pursuant to
We have to go in.
New Jersey law, then we're gonna have to add that to that handbook, and I'm just wondering if it would be better just to have, like, a reference page?
Sure.
Or
Yeah.
You know, each different type of plan that certain teams are involved with.
Okay, very good, all right. The next one I have a question on, in that area. Was 2431, I think it's on the second page, under the, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Can we just make sure no one has any other questions under administration at this time?
I have one under administration.
Go ahead.
It is 1631.
The residency, 1634?
No, no, I have no problem with that. I mean, I knew that there was a date, I didn't know what the date was, was like, actually see where it said, 2011, but that's not what I'm, it's my star, so I can find these, these old, and now I can't find my stars.
Is under superintendent's evaluation, maybe that would be?
Twelve forty.
That's twelve forty.
Twelve.
Is it twelve forty?
Yes, evaluation of superintendent.
My question, my big question is, I know there's always been some confusion as far as deadlines for when certain phases of superintendent's evaluation has to be in. Just having served on this board for this many years, it seems like it's always a different time of year. Now, I know it says the written report has to be in by July 1, I get that, but should there be a timeline set up through the course of the year in our policy that states when certain things have to begin?
July 1, July 1 is the final deadline within policy.
Exactly, I agree.
However, that changes based on what we're told by the county office and the Department of Education. So for example, we had to have Mark's evaluation in, and you, everyone reviewed it, and we went over it during the last board meeting.
Right.
So we could get it in by April 30th, and we can certify it in the minutes to show that as a board of education, you discussed
Well, that's what I mean.
That was a date that was given to us, and that could change, so to write it into the policy, that's why they have the general policy there.
Okay.
However, with CUSAC and county requirements, where they're looking for certain things, they just will sometimes give deadlines to make sure that things are in by a certain time, and that they're not asking for it during the course of a new school year, after one school year has passed.
Okay, I just know there's been confusion in years past about that, and I was just wondering if it's something that we felt was a barge, or be in our policy that by 60 days prior to the deadline, this, this, and this should occur, so
Is this what everyone else has, like, this is what Strauss Esme is saying is okay?
Mm-hmm. What I mean is, a board, if you wanted to change that to be April 30th, that the superintendent evaluation will be completed, but then you're locking yourself into that within the policy as well.
Well, I mean, I think that what Lynn was politely trying to say is, you know, sometimes maybe there needs to be a deadline, because some, some, to make sure it's done, so
Correct. The New Jersey School Boards Association has a timeline for everything.
Yes, they do.
So it's on the website somewhere, you can pull it, I'm sure.
But they, or what are you saying, do you change, like, at the whim of the county, they need some changes?
Well, the county office, for example, we went through a CUSAC review early in April. As part of that CUSAC review, they were reviewing their prior CUSAC review that was conducted, which one of the things indicated that I brought up in October, when I went through our CUSAC review with everyone, was the fact that the superintendent evaluation had not been completed and submitted to the county office. And as a board, you said that you remember
Doing it, right?
Doing the superintendent evaluation, but it wasn't submitted with certified minutes and everything attached. So during our review, one of the things that they wanted from us was no later than April 30th, or certified minutes showing the fact that we had done that review and that it was conducted.
Thank you.
Another thing, the New Jersey School Boards, what they recommend with the deadlines is that at midpoint, there should be a midpoint review of the superintendent's progress on the objectives and so forth.
Correct. Well, should that be part of the, when you look at the regulations on Runnymede Superintendent's evaluation, they're listed step by step, certain criteria that have to be met. My point is, if we're getting a deadline, okay, well, Sean's saying it changes year to year, or this year's July 1, let's say next year it's June 1, so can we specifically state 30 days prior to whenever it's due in?
Effective deadline, effective deadline.
Right, 60 days prior to, just back it up so many days, so we don't get stuck in that situation again.
I just want to clarify also with the deadline, it's not necessarily a hard deadline by the county. However, since they came into review and they knew where we were in our superintendent evaluation, they said we would like to see this completed until it's backed by April 30th, so we can complete your CUSAC review. Other districts might not be until July 1.
Right, but when do we as a district hear officially when a, an evaluation should be in for final to the challenge?
And the March, and the March, when you hear the steps that you need to take, that's when you guys begin to send them online.
Right.
And that stuff, and everything's gone down online, so
Okay, so we don't hear anything till March, and then everybody's running for cover, as far as, I just, it drives me crazy. I don't think it's organized enough, that's, that's my
The recommendation by New Jersey School Boards is based on the state regulations.
Yes.
And the state regulations is July 1. They strongly also recommend you do a midpoint review, which would be January.
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
And they also said that under the regulations, every board member evaluates the superintendent.
Right.
I know in the past, it wasn't always the entire board doing it, that's how it's supposed to be done.
Right.
Those are the state regulations, and New Jersey School Board supports them.
I think what, it may not have to be in policy, but I think that we just have to as a board
Have a calendar of that.
Having, not, not having, yeah, maybe we have a little board calendar, we just have to make note of it, be a little more diligent, and I'm sure that Mr., Dr. McCarron will,
That will come.
will, will guide us in that direction. But I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think we're all on board here.
You were part of the panic situation as well, for a couple
Oh, absolutely, I was in here on the last day with Dr. McCarron helping me in the office, meaning this year, so
And I just kind of think we need to do that, in that way.
Yeah.
We just need to stay on
But I feel like that was my fault, though, because I was busy and I saw the email and I didn't, I didn't act on it. I feel like maybe, you know, we might have to go old school and may have a phone call, because once Dr. McCarron called me on the phone and he kind of said, "Let's go, we need to get in here." So I think maybe we needed
But as a board, you also had 100% participation in the superintendent evaluation.
We did, for the first time in a long time, that was, so that, that's plus. Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, hey, the majority says that they're okay with just that July 1 date, and we backtrack, and we're assured that, now, is it in our regulations right now, that mid-year, we get a progress report from, I don't remember where it's
I don't know, but we'll get to the regulations, we'll have to look that up, we'll have to check it. And a lot of times, what they suggest is also to do a practice, just to make sure that you're reviewing not only the superintendent's goal, but also the board's goals, and that everyone's in line with what is going on.
Does anybody have any other questions under administration at this time?
No.
No? Okay, Angel, we're, we're taking this, Angel, right in front of you there, underneath that green sheet, we went through bylaws, we're moving on to page two, which is program. At this time, is there any questions on any of the policies under program?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Policy 2431, athletic competition. Again, just a question, second page. The policy doesn't state, and again, when we get to regulations, I don't remember seeing it there either, I just want to bring this up, it doesn't state the specific academic or other requirements for a child to be eligible. And the only reason why I'm bringing that question up is that it should be specific, it shouldn't be vague, so that a teacher that sees a young boy, young girl in gym class with remarkable athletic abilities in a certain area might want to recruit them to play a sport, but there's no stating as to what your GPA has to be, or you may, you can have no failures or one failure, or if you were suspended externally from school, does this we have?
I know there's, in our handbook for the students, I want to say it's a 75 or better in all academic grades, like, not having any failing type of grade thing. Now, this is, remember, this is what they just sent us, there's nothing in there, we can always put things in there.
Yeah, we just say that
In my opinion, if you're failing, but you should be
The Runnymede School, Runnymede Schools has specific guidelines that are available in the student handbook, something like that.
That will probably have to be added.
So the people that are referred to that.
This is, if you look up there, this is one of the ones that options to fill in, you should have
Yes, yeah, we have the options.
Yes, so that's what we have to fill in. So, okay, so do we do that right now?
We kind of, like, I can
I think we should.
Yeah.
Can you give me student handbook?
Because we don't have
Can you give me student handbook?
Yeah.
Wink has one in his office, in a nice little organizer, I used it this afternoon.
That way everyone understands that there's no names.
Like, yours is a month, people in grades one, what do you put grades there?
That it didn't, that's why, yeah.
If you're looking at it, you just can be spamming out the websites, you can retain it and allow them, you know, in grades four, five, to play
Yeah, absolutely, I could just feel
I was just gonna say, you could
I could be fourth, feel like in the fourth and fifth grade.
Say to my colleagues, yes.
I have problems with that, so we
So we're gonna say a pupil in grades four through eight is eligible for participation in the school district sponsored programs of athletic competition if he, she has an average of 75 or better in all academic areas?
Yeah, and that was the standard, like, you could have, you know, you have to have that, maintain that average of 75 throughout.
Yes.
You know what I mean, so if you put below, even if you're already on a team or something, you know, the graduationary status to get that up for whatever it is, so
And then you can also put there, like, see student handbook.
Throughout the season, the athletic season, throughout the school year, what do we throw out in here in number two?
He's looking it up right now, I'll have to see.
Well, the number one that you have to pick, whether you are not eligible to participate in high school.
So the student must be passing with a grade of 75 in each major academic, a Gary and a Luke tryout, and just pay any extracurricular activity. In addition, they must be in good academic standing in all special area classes as well in order to participate, so even the tryout, you have to have those grades.
All right, let me, follow up question.
Yeah.
Do we do Merkle grades here?
Yes, based on, yeah.
In the report card, the grades, they're not A, B, C, D, F?
Not in, they're not, because in the middle school, it is, you know, you're Merkle 95, then A, rec, in the elementary school, it is A, B.
I'm just saying, because it's 75, so we have to have
We could do a scan, we could, we could do
Okay, okay. So we're
See, that works.
So we're referring to the student handbook for the wording of this
Yes. Yes.
So referring to student
So for number two?
Changes.
Yes.
So we're
Okay, thank you.
We don't have number
And I can also put, in my opinion, I would put in not only academic, but attendance.
Attendance?
Well, attendance is the next one, option for number three.
I have the number two for all So what's it say? Can you push that up?
Yeah, most places, maintain satisfactory attendance to be eligible.
I believe, state of New Jersey, you're supposed to have, what, a child 92% attendance or better, unless that's changed for the year.
It dipped.
It may have dipped, maybe 90.
Right, we started 122. Yeah. And they get in specifics here with how many excused absences, and all that kind of stuff. Usually we don't, again, we don't have the policy in place, we haven't had too many major concern with that, and that's just, it's good to have it in
Well, what are you, so what were you gonna put? The unsatisfactory for number one excused absences exceeds blind school days in the market, in the trimester. So how many in the, or in the school year, like, what do you, what do you do for that?
Oh, I mean
Yeah, of 180 days, there is a specific number that states the first.
For 15.
I don't know if it's changed since I
You're not allowed to have 15, you're not allowed to have more than 15 unexcused absences, I know that at the high school level, for sure.
I think if you have 14 or, over 14, you're over nine, you're over 8%, which is less than 92%.
Okay.
Most school districts, it's 14 days, and after that, you could go with what's called a no-credit status.
Yes, that's what, that's what happens.
You have to make up the time.
Right.
So you're saying if it exceeds 10% of the school days in that particular school year?
I believe that's, that would be
So 10%?
Maybe we could put a star next to that and look that up, and let us know exactly what, since the percentage rate went down, let's be absolutely specific.
Okay.
All right.
Are we going with days or with percentage?
Well, we're gonna put a star there, we might have to adopt that again next month.
Okay.
Okay? To, if we change the
So you don't have to pick all these options?
You can just choose
Yeah, yes, yes.
So, which one are you gonna choose then, right? You have to have number three in here?
Or three. Well, number two is your grades, number three
Yeah, maybe attendance.
You could add the sentence in number three up in the number two, you can morph those two together, you can blend them, it doesn't, you can always add stuff into that, so we're taking, you know, what that is, elementary, middle school, we can blend those two together, three, not only percentage, but you can blend it to have attendance as well.
I think that's important.
Are we getting specific with excused versus unexcused absences too?
It would be, it would be unexcused.
It would be unexcused, yes.
The next page
It's like the kid at surgery has something, he can't
That, and that also becomes very tricky.
Yes.
And having dealt with many parental meetings with what's excused, unexcused, we finally adopt a policy that says absences, period. We weren't going to be a party to determine that's excused, that's not excused. You have, you can miss 18 days or 16, whatever, and that's it.
Yes.
We're not gonna sit down with you in a conference and talk for an hour and a half over what you think is an excusable absence and what we think isn't.
Well, my only argument to that is my daughter had two knee surgeries and missed a few, a few weeks of school, and stepped, and was still an athlete, so she may have had a head cold as well, and put her over that.
But what you can do also is you can put in a policy that, under extenuating circumstances, like a knee surgery.
So we're gonna prove, just to break our athletic one tonight, I've got the options, and then we'll put this back.
You got it, okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anything else under program?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I keep this for the rest of the
If nothing else under program, we'll move along to teaching staff members.
Okay. I have a question on number, uh, policy 3125. Employment of teaching
Of substitute teachers?
But this is teaching staff.
Employment of teaching staff members.
Gotcha.
3125. On page two, one, two, three, fifth paragraph down, it's a skinny one. An individual employed by the board in any substitute capacity or position shall be required to undergo a criminal history record check in accordance with provisions. I would feel comfortable with that read. An individual employed by the board in any substitute capacity or position shall be required to undergo a criminal history record check prior to starting the position in accordance with the provisions. And that's only my thinking, we have other board members.
We don't allow anybody to begin.
Well, isn't that part of the provision anyway?
That may be part of the provision, did you look up this provision?
I did not, if it is, then it's a viewpoint, then a viewpoint.
I believe that it is, yeah, I believe that it is.
Okay.
I'm 99% sure that it is.
Not 100%.
Put that 100%, I'm not a 100% from 90. But that, because I, because I agree, I do agree with you 100%, how about that? How about anything else on the teaching staff members?
Yes, 3224 is the next one I have, I haven't looked this, 3224, which is evaluation of principals, vice principals, and assistant principals?
Yes. How about, anything else on the teaching staff members?
Yes, 3224 is the next one I have, I haven't looked this, 3224, which is evaluation of principals, vice principals, and assistant principals?
Yes.
It's the one, two, third paragraph down on the first page. The board shall highly adopt evaluation rubers for principals, vice principals, and assistant principals, which shall be submitted to commiserate by two persons. I'm just curious, I've never seen a ruber for
We do have the ruber this year for, they use the Marshall ruber for that, so
Oh, okay, fine, that answered my question then.
It's like when we did the teacher evaluation, we adopted a principal supervisor evaluation as well. They've been completed, and the process is finalized, maybe third of the, third month for all.
Very good.
Could we see a copy, could you just put that in our pack, a packet next month, Mr. Iannucci, a blank one, I don't need, we don't need to see specific ones, but just a blank one, please?
I honestly wanted to think work on this summer, because I'm not sure I'm thrilled with that one, three, even now.
Okay, well, we have, we can adopt a new one.
Thatcher, I've been working on documents throughout the year, and that checklist, it's still a bit checklisty, if that's even a word.
Okay.
If it's
Yes.
I want to have it based on the goals that they set for yourselves, and show evidence throughout the year, so it's more of a working
Okay, very good. Very good. Okay, I have another one in that, in that category, policy thirty-three seventy-two. Uh, a teacher, teaching staff member tenure acquisition, uh, under the first paragraph, number one, three consecutive calendar years for any sure period which may be fixed. I thought it was, went from three or four years.
We did. So, is that policy wrong?
Federal regulations.
Okay, which, which policy number was that?
Policy that we have in place, and that was just changed.
Thirty-three seventy-two.
So, that's a federal regulation.
Federal regulations, so that's only for the teachers who started as of August two thousand twelve.
So, you're starting at. That is three.
You're still gonna have some staff members, I think next year's your last year, of third-year teachers.
Gotcha, definitely, yeah, got it.
Yep, thank you.
We got it.
That answers that question. And I am done in that area, thank you very much.
No problem. Anybody else under teaching staff? No? All right, support staff members? I just have a general question, won't we hold on? How come there is under support staff, a use of social networking sites, but not under teaching staff? We approved it already, is it the same policy?
Might not be in your packet though. Might not have that.
Well, I have forty-two eighty-two, so I can just look at that. No, this is support staff.
It's thirty-two eighty-two.
So, it, there is one in place?
Yeah.
Same thing?
Eighty-two. Yeah, and actually the support staff.
I know that we adopted it, because I remember we adopted it late, I remember when we adopted it, but I just wanted to make sure, I, I.
It was the same.
I, it was the same.
Right, when we went back into committees, we needed this for support staff.
Absolutely. But I have no questions on their support staff, is anybody else? Support staff?
No question.
No? All right, five thousand pupils.
I have one for fifty-six hundred.
Okay.
And that is pupil discipline code of conduct. I don't see, unless I've missed it, where this policy refers to a set of guidelines for the administration when they're doling out discipline. You have three different buildings where inappropriate behavior can happen and three different people dealing with that, or four different people, two here. And it may not be consistent, um, I mean, let's say a student commits misbehavior A. This person gives them a detention, and this person gives them internal suspension, and this person wants to suspend them from school. Do we have at least a, a chart that says for this offense, first offense, this is what happens, second offense, this is what happens? So, there's consistency.
Some things that happen in elementary school might be a little bit different than that in middle school, age appropriate.
Yes, of course.
I mean, I know in this, in this document, especially, I know.
It's in a regulation.
It's in a, right, the, there's a chart, Mrs. Wilson?
In the handbook?
Yeah, there's one somewhere.
A lot of fractions, like disruptive in class, up in every class, possible last year, parent, teacher potential parent.
Good, that's.
Fairly attended, teacher side attention to administrative.
Okay, good.
Is that part of the regulations versus the policy, where is that all?
Student code conduct?
Code of conduct. No, I'm saying, what you just read, is that just the code of conduct, or is it part of the policy, or is it part of the regulations?
That's part of the code of conduct, but if you wanted to do a specific.
I'm comfortable with that.
You do X, you get Y, that's fine.
Right.
Yeah, but that would be the regulations.
That was, she says, that's what, that's my question right now.
Yes, yes.
Would that be under the regulations, yes, is?
Should be, I remember seeing.
I, I don't remember. Fifty-six hundred, and the only thing that has to be filled in is the offenses on that, we have to leave the background.
So, that's one of the things too.
But we have that in our handbook.
Just, just like we did for the athletic one, we get a proof of general tonight and go back and add that stuff over there.
There's always it somewhere, and you have it in the handbook or.
Now, while we were on students, I did not get a chance to go into our policy to see, I just, it popped up when I was reading, uh, reports for the meeting tonight. And one of the nurses' reports was talking about excuses from gym class. Uh, I just wondered, do we have a policy that talks about excuse? What constitutes a parental excuse?
Usually, usually when a student's excused from gym, that has to be accompanied by a conditions note.
Is that a reason? Are you sure?
If the kid's not feeling well, and their parents don't send them to school, I assume they used to, you know, remove from gym day.
Correct, right. I just wanna make sure, you know, we're covering our busses, that's all, and I'm not getting into any. Okay, that was just a question, right, because when I was reading the nurse's report, I went, oh, I have to go look up, see if it's in the policy, and I just didn't get it too.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on their pupils? If not, we will move to six thousand, finance.
I was gonna ask about, um, you have one way to generate revenue for a school, and especially for your athletic teams and things like that, is, is two possibly, um, you know, a lot of schools do banners for local businesses, um, that's something to look into, signage, um, probably signage out of the fence there, since it's an option. So, if you explore that possibly, like, I'll pay you that idea. You don't have buses, that's not even, play the, you know, raise, raise.
They do that, right?
Absolutely, it's, it's actually a big, um, a huge fundraiser, because it's like a yearly thing, you know?
And usually upfront, like, let's say a banner plus six hundred dollars to put in your gym, you know, raise all the body, and then every year they pay, it's less than.
Yeah, they make, they make like three hundred, you know what I mean, for that. Before you go out, could you just make sure that the board sees, like, what you're gonna do before you go out to the public with that?
Yes.
Yes. You want to talk bulldog vending, talk in the cabinet?
One thing we discussed also was with the amount of building usage on the weekends, and also even during the school day with games after school, practices, activities. Even if we had simple vending, like order machines, um, order vending machines, um, we do the healthy snacks, um, sometimes vitamin waters, Gatorades, um, they would all be nutritious, um, in nature, not, and sodas and things like that. But that's one way to generate that revenues that would, that would go completely towards our food service accounts. But that would also allow us to do things in the food service areas with the money that we generate from that extra revenue.
I think that's a great idea, I could look into that, you know? As long as we control the ship of content, what's that, what's it going to spend?
Right, that's why you have to just look at the, like, even if it's Gatorade, if we can have the G two options, you know what I mean? And, you know, like, like you said, I know there's why I do them order once.
Sure everybody's in the world, they will have ten calories and things like that, but.
It's like whole, whole thing, it's like, it's like, it's like drinking.
My son loves it, loves.
Drinking.
We sure are, we do.
But if you're only doing healthy options also, you would have to limit it to outside the school day.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It could be something that was on inventory cafeteria hours.
Sure, it'd be an effect, lunches.
Because it ties in with what we're already serving.
I think it's a good idea, let us know how you make out.
Seaweed from Japan?
Freshly se- sushi rolls.
Sushi rolls, yeah.
Sushi rolls.
Well, coming from somebody who doesn't eat buffet, I'm sure you would have that knowledge.
Hey, you don't eat buffet, neither do I, I can't stand buffet, I want someone to wait over there, bring me my food. buffet, you have a new store, they have their stuff in their hair, is it? No.
Any other questions on their finance? So, um, the vending option and the signing options to generate revenue, sounds like a good idea, let us know how you guys make out with that.
Oh, we have to do that, can we, do you signage like that?
Why can't you?
All school districts, so if you think about all the gyms you go to.
Many.
Think about all the ice hockey rinks you go to.
I mean, there's a gym down the street here that shop.
Washington County has a lot of buses for Sarah's names.
Trent has a whole bunch of signs in there, Jen.
I remember seeing last year in the news, a high school in Texas, and their gym roof was painted Coke, a color, Coke. Now, I was a protectors, so it's not goofy, but, and they, I don't know which one they got, but they did that on their gym roof.
Well, like Mr. Induji said, ShopRite built a gym.
Flying over, it was near an airport, or was it?
When I go, I gotta get a Coke.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll move to property then, anything on their property that is the seven thousands?
Uh, seven four three zero, school safety?
Yes.
Um, if you go down to the third paragraph, I highlighted, the superintendent shall prepare regulations governing school safety and the prevention of accidents and fires that include as a minimum the requirements of law and the applicable rules of various departments of state government. And at the bottom it reads, safety regulations shall be promulgated to all school employees and shall be reviewed and evaluated annually. Superintendent is directed to instruct teaching staff members in proper safety precautions. And mine is just a question, it's wonderful, how is this accomplished? And, like, is it through a seminar, a workshop for the staff, and do they get anything in writing they can refer to?
Is it listed under the regulations?
You have to, you know, you give out someone.
In August, Mark met with the building principals and also the chief of police, discussed certain safety protocols.
How's it done at the state?
GCN, well, once those are created and developed, um, we then do trainings during our opening day, so that's one of the first things that we cover.
Okay, and someone's GCN training is also covered, building compliance networks. Okay. Ms. Mark was in charge of, she hounds them, they, they're not, you know.
Well, she comes and we're the house.
Yes. Okay, anything else on the seven thousands, hi Patty? No problem. So, anything else? No? All right, eight thousand, operations.
One thing I, I know the smoking law comes up all of a while.
Smoking?
Smoking on school grounds, which also comes up.
You do now, though.
Yeah, so we do now, I'm just saying, that's one thing.
Yep.
And then also.
Stay up, usually, you know, the current smoking, okay.
We talked about that one meeting about school district provided technology devices, seventy-five twenty-three.
Did the school board mention, may have seen online, but also addresses the e-cigarettes.
It does, I checked, I checked, that was my question. You have to have the beeper pens and the e-cigarettes now, there, freshmen love to smoke in my class.
That's in the topic.
But, you're not allowed, are you?
No, you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to.
The Daveer cigarettes.
They are permitted to do?
No! I said some.
Probably, I believe you said permitted.
No!
With that policy in there, I would be surprised. So, I just, we talked about school district provided technology devices, I don't know if anybody looked at that, um, policy.
What number was that?
Seventy-five twenty-three. And you had some concerns about, you know, when we're doing the Chromebook initiative, the one-to-one, and what the students, you know, as far as damaging the device or anything like that. Or what actually is possible. And that is in there.
Yep.
If there's anything, like, tonight we can adopt this, if there's anyone to add to that.
I thought this was good, I think it, I think it covered it. Yeah, it's very thorough.
Again, the optional of including a cost, um, what we were stating though was, is with our purchase of the devices, we have an extended warranty that covers the device completely for a length of four years. If anything happens to the device, it can be sent back for full replacement up to twice a year. My feeling is if we have to replace one single device more than twice a year, we might need to look for other options for, um, individuals with that device if it was not accidental. Um, this would be the policy, however, parents and students would also be signing off, saying that they would be responsible for the device. And the only time that a student might be charged, uh, uh, fee would be if the damage was, was intentional to the device, or if it was vandalized in any way. But if it was a simple issue with the device and it wasn't, or it was accidental, we already have that, uh, procedure in place for replacement.
Yeah, the last paragraph, just, pupils shall provide laws, school district policy, the use of school district provided technology device, and send you the consequences, you know, the law is, so, that, that's pretty solid, that, that one, that's one.
Yeah, I thought so.
And we did talk about that, we were talking about the way they're issuing back the federal law, so.
Now, this is also listed under regulations, right, how it will be regulated?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we'll go to operations, eight thousand.
All right, I just have questions with, um, the breakfast and the lunch versus serve.
Yeah.
Um, are we selecting an option tonight, or again, are we just passing in general, going back to it? I mean, I'm looking at the breakfast option saying, you know, listing all schools, or is it just one food?
It would be.
Uh, just assuming all schools, like we always did, correct?
I know, I know, like, the offer is, you know, offer versus serve is a big, you know, issue, of what they offer, and things, and anything like that, so, you know, that would be up to us to set that, if we, if we wanted to. Do you want to give the other kids the option, do you wanna give the older kids the option?
Well, I, I know personally, talking to parents in our district, that children do not always eat everything that they have purchased. They won't, they have to get in line and take it, and the eleme- the younger elementary schools, they have to get in line, take it, or decline it. And a lot of food is not eaten at the end of the day. So, to me, it would save money, it saves the parents money, it would save time, and the kids could eat what they really want to eat and not have to worry so much about, you know, getting upset with your child, why didn't you take vegetables?
I think the, the price won't change, yes, the price is, the price is, they certainly have the habit, like, in the cafeteria that night. I mean, the kids would have the option if they wanted or not.
Right.
Of course, the kid's not part of the, they have stewed carrots compared to.
Except for the lighting, so.
Yeah.
But practically, you know, they're not going to do that.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, you're willing to do that.
Well, you, we can't, we can't, you throw it out.
You throw it out anyway.
Well, they throw it out.
We just do it all through the doors.
All three buildings, yeah.
And also the way our food currently comes, it's coming packaged, it's coming as a set, so, to make sure that it fits all the requirements that students need to have within their meal. And that's how we get reimbursed, um, monthly out of that, that will.
It's just odd, because it says it's to decline.
One, you wait one.
Midway.
If you read that for the lunch one too, it says you can decline two of the five requirements.
Yeah, that's where.
Yeah, I think it makes a bigger difference if we do it in house, doesn't it make such a big difference if we got it back in there?
Yeah, it did, right. So, I think we'll probably just go with, with the mandate at there, right, once I say. Any other questions on their operations? No?
Is there anything with transportation, if there were any questions, I didn't talk about it, you know, the situation with transportation.
My mind is still just boggled about how we decipher and do everything, you know, children become homeless, or just, that just, I don't know. It just blows my mind, and I can't keep track of it, I, I don't know how you do it.
Last week was an interesting week.
Oh.
I don't know about now, but it was.
But it can change weekly.
Yeah. It changed by the day, actually, it did that, it did last week, so.
Well, I mean, I guess the state of our world today, it just makes me sad, because I have the children, they're the ones who are also back in school.
And the other little kids know, they're like, so-and-so has to take a cab home, so he doesn't live in, like, it's sad, it's very sad. Well, I didn't have any, I mean, it is what it is, I'm just a patient. Uh, personally, for me, I mean, it is, how about community?
Girls' going, that's one, just because I don't know anything else.
No?
There still is no regulatory, um, maybe, see, I guess, that keeps track of them, school, right, in the state, and that's a state, or is it? I know, it's a state, but, but the state doesn't, you keep track, so, you know, these children are all a new cracks. They contact your legislator, that's all they, they probably do, they contact.
I, you're, you're right.
The other question I asked, I think it's, it's the only way you can get an answer, or whatever.
All right, let's go to regulations, so we can try and get through this. Um, regulations, we'll do the same thing, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. So we'll get out our summary of regulations. So we'll start again with one thousand, administration. There is two there. Any issues there?
I did not know.
I'm just thrilled that we had a hundred percent participation.
Yes. Exactly. I don't remember that.
Many did not. At the time, I've been, I, I did not, I did not know we had the option not to participate. I thought that was the community.
Well, you know how this.
I know, I can think of something, you do something. I didn't think that was an option.
So then we'll move to two thousand, program. Anybody have anything other two thousands for program?
I just thought that, um, the three-four-fourteen, I just thought that that was always very thorough and it covered everything, so I don't have any questions, I'm just happy that it was thorough, very self-explanatory.
I didn't have any here either. Anybody?
There are going to be some changes coming up with the fitness, medical examination for fitness participation. I know, the nurses went through that thing, all the same last month. So there's recent tweaks going over that, as far as what the doctor has to prove.
They changed the whole, um, physical form, there's a whole new physical form that they have to do. And the doctors actually have to have taken some kind of course, certification class, to be able to sign off on the physicals. And the nurses are supposed to have a copy of his certificate to say that he took that class.
Well, I'll find out now, so we'll make that someplace.
But they're going to go to a meeting, and I think they're going to try to, the county have listed doctors that have it, get one of them, and then they just get them now.
I can't even imagine that. Okay. Yeah, but they're, the doc, it's hard, I've been waiting for paper from my doctor for ten days for my daughter, first, for the school. Teaching staff members, if there's nothing else there. Anything there?
Yes.
We're on the three thousand now.
I'll see, three, two, two, one. Evaluation of teachers. Uh, first page, second paragraph. Announced observation means the person conducting the evaluation for the purpose of evaluation will notify the teacher of the date and the class period the observation will be conducted. Why don't we also have unannounced evaluations?
Is it in alphabetical order?
I couldn't find anywhere where we have unannounced evaluations.
There it is, right here.
What page?
It's on, it's right, keep going, another one. Here's unannounced, it was, I looked for the same thing, but it was, it's in alphabetical order.
Good, my apologies.
There's four, I find a high, it's on the number three, this is fine, yes, you're right.
Okay, well, that takes care of that, because I think you should have both. And, oh, with the same policy, the third page. Fourth paragraph. Post-observation conference means a meeting either in person or remotely. Now, I need clarification, what do you mean by remotely? Because in-person means you're meeting with me. Remotely, I'm sure doesn't mean you and I are meeting at the diner up here on the plank.
Remotely would mean you and I FaceTime one another for our conference.
Okay, now you're.
They could use you email something, if you can do it.
As long as we're conferencing. Uh, I had an experience working in a district where I'd be evaluated, and five or six weeks would go by, I'd get a message in my mailbox, stuck down at the office, signed your evaluation. There needs to be dialogue.
It's not how we've done it, and that's not how it's worked.
Especially with the new, with the new.
You need to have dialogue.
With the new evaluation programs, it's almost.
Okay.
So what other, what other examples of remotely do you need besides FaceTime and emails?
Maybe a phone conference?
So, okay, that's.
Do you still write letters? I don't.
I don't know, I don't know if we really utilize those methods.
No, and I, we don't.
For the most part, it's a small building, so you're seeing the teachers on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And it's not like you're, it's not, it's not a large district where you're going between nineteen schools of supervisor. We, we're in the buildings regularly, we're in the classrooms regularly. So, I mean, a lot of times, I'll end up having my post-conference after I'm done observing, because the kids are going to their next period. So I'll stay there and have the entire conversation with the teacher. And I mean, the evidence I provide to the teacher, the score that I provide, should then reflect that conversation.
Yep. And that conversation is private. Good.
Unless they want to give your representation.
They, uh, they have that right.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they want to.
Uh, what I, I just meant like.
Not in front of the kids.
I've seen where someone came down and started talking about some evaluation, an administrator with the teachers, teachers and kids are going by. That's enough, that's a private thing. That was it, on that one. Thank you.
I forgot that this is thirty-seven.
Me too, I was impressed. So then we can move along to four thousands. Support staff members. I was good here too, anybody have any questions? Patty, no? Okay. Five thousands, pupils.
I had a question, but it was answered back on policy of the fifty-six hundred, because you have it in your handbook, and my question was, do we list offenses but not the consequences for inappropriate behavior that you do? So that question doesn't exist.
And unfortunately, you always get that one, you feel like, this is the first time I've seen this, or whatever the consequence, yeah, whatever, something bizarre happens. But we try to make it general enough, there's the United States, there is a discretion, if there's a question, we'll.
Okay, so if there's not another five thousand, we'll move to six thousand. I think this was self-explanatory. Any questions? I did. Angel, anything? No, Patty? Good.
Can I go back to the five thousand?
Yes.
Just because of the ABDs.
Yes.
Again, the New Jersey regulation, how is that defined? Is it square footage, is it floors in a building, is, how does the, um, the placement of an, it's fifty-three hundred?
I think it's the accessibility of that.
Okay.
And again, like reasonable proximity.
But it doesn't give her.
Doesn't get specific, so I'll check in to see what they consider. I'm sure there's a, somebody out there that says.
Right, I, I'm, I'm just concerned with what distance somebody has to travel. I know you said, uh, I think it was Christine that checked into this building and we were okay. But I don't know about the elementary.
Worrying about for the other, you, you said, Patty, at least one every other floor or something like that.
Yes, absolutely. These are the top floors in the other two buildings.
To support what you're asking, it might be wise to talk to the, the doctor that we use. What does he or she think the distance should be between?
Right, there is a, there is a.
I'd rather have a doctor tell me than someone who's state-formative education.
No, there is a formula that's out there that states, you know, you have to be so many seconds from a defibrillator. So, my big thing is, okay, this school, for instance, if they're in the gym, and they have to go down from the fourth and fifth grade hallway to the very last classroom, that's the farthest from the gym.
They didn't come back.
Are they going to get there in the thirty seconds of time? I think it was thirty seconds, that they're stating it. From the time that person grabs that defibrillator, they should be able to reach that student or staff member within thirty seconds. I believe that's what it is, so I'm just, I'm concerned about the elementary schools with the upper floors. Because there's no way.
It's common sense, same as you have on your.
There's no way a staff member is going to get to the top floor in thirty seconds on those buildings.
How much?
About that.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, up one stairwell, all the way down.
Maybe not.
Yeah. I think we just.
Really?
Need to have us to once.
Okay, um.
Moving on.
Moving on, all right. Six thousand, I think we said, I, I think we were good. Anybody else? I, I was good, anybody else have any questions? There was nothing for seven, nothing for eight, and there was one under nine thousand. Anything there?
Now, I ask the question as far as who regulates this?
Who regulates what?
At the state level. Who regulates what children are in school?
Uh, well.
It was, you know, you know, it says here, in New Jersey, it makes me.
Why did you want to talk about this?
You know, he says, children, you know, when the superintendent or, believe the person is not complying with compulsory education according to our law, then there's proceedings that have to follow. But I don't think that should have to happen from your office, Mark, on a daily or weekly basis. It seems like we're missing, we're missing a government agency somewhere in this state that should regulate. Some of the local children, I mean, I have a problem with children being in school, I just want to make sure they're growing, if the rate of study grown.
I also, what number, I don't remember the number.
Thirty-one.
Uh, I sent you an email a few weeks back regarding adopting a dress and group policy for staff. Pat's going to run out and, uh, grab that, I apologize, thirty-one. But I have to say to Angela, she wants to take a respite for a second. I didn't see it. I, I just literally finalized it, but I don't have it here today. But she's going to get it first, um.
Hey, that, you know, you talked about a fundraiser. You could have talked to our sister principal here, that's what we had a fundraiser. My wife just retired from Brown Community School, and staff were not permitted to wear denim or blue jeans. Well, what they would do, once a month, they would have a special Friday denim day, but you had to pay five dollars if you wanted to wear jeans. And all that money is for student activities.
You'd have like a gray race, and things like that.
And my wife says, Jesus, I five percent of the teachers.
Oh, we're in jeans. Well, we also do that for like fundraising, like for different teams and sports and scholarships and such, and it does work.
Does work.
Did you want to talk about, well, can, can we, can we, do you want to say, well, you want to talk a bit, what's the deal with it? So we can, um, what, what was the issue with that?
It was just one of the things we talked about, administrative teams. Yeah, we want our staff to represent our school district on a daily basis. These kids look up to our staff members, role models, and we felt that also it's getting a little lax. Uh, but not having a specific dress and group policy in place, it's difficult to, I think, use the word reprimand. Discuss that with the teacher, if you know how they, they're basically, uh, they're free to wear whatever they choose. So there's some staff, uh, some women who responded back to my email, uh, to support them, so we created one. This drops my opposite thing, it's, it's, they have about seven sample policy they gave us. We kind of accelerated that for each form. I apologize for having like.
Something that you want to implement next, uh, school.
Yeah, we're beginning for the, yeah, for the fourth thing, this school year. We're going to give it to the staff, make them wear it.
So would it alleviate, like, the denim one of the issues? Okay. Swat pants. Swat pants and wool wear, pants and things like that.
Well, I don't know if we would wear school wear, but I do.
I do. I don't personally, but I know people who do.
One of the big things.
You have.
Yes, correct.
But, like, one of the things, like, I don't remember, one rule, the ministry just tells, if you have to go home, then you don't have to be chained. It's probably inappropriate for school, and sometimes you're saying that. That, that's a good rule, not just on Fridays, but others, some other days, so we want to make sure.
I think it's a good idea to have a dress, because you're really training the kids from the very beginning, all, even to play for.
Work.
Oh, and you get my question, you're going to.
Well, he's talking about for the staff members.
Yeah, but that's where the kids want them.
Absolutely, for their role models.
I think it's a wonderful idea, in fact, because it promotes volume of district, it promotes volume of buildings, it promotes volume of your teachers. And when you, when you're dressed up, you feel better and you.
And it's not to say, I'm not, I'm not trying to say like the entire staff, it's just there's times where it was a little lax, and, you know, you don't want to betray that in this district. Um, yeah, so that might be a little, but, uh, I have no problem with the theme days, and they, we have to discuss that with the principals. You know, specific days, and it's Friday, jean day, spirit day, and things like that, that's fine. It's, we're doing fundraising, we understand that. You know, inclement weather, I mean, there was not times, I mean, there was times I came in this year in boots and jeans.
Yeah.
While we were doing, because that's, yeah, with kids, you know, in the, in and out of the buildings or whatever, if I understand that. Excessive heat, I understand that, but.
I mean, it's talked about, we have air conditioning now. Talked about excessive, not in all. That doesn't fly.
Not in all classrooms, and there's still some classrooms in this building.
Wow. I just know that I was at Downing School today for Sammy's author's day, and the air conditioning. So that was wonderful.
Never complain it's too cold.
Uh, you can tell that to bring a hoodie.
I can't win.
So you just want us to review this?
You can just take a look at it.
It's like too cold in here.
We would not be the first, um, school district with a teacher's dress. It takes some. Physical education teachers related to our teachers to have to, you know, but still, even, even if it's ed and health teachers, should still be dressed appropriately for the school. So, we dress as that.
We absolutely have a policy. As a matter of fact, when we wear jeans, we can't wear a t-shirt unless we have special permission as well. We have the collared shirt or a nice shirt with the jeans, you know.
What else is jeans made of?
What's that?
I see number three jeans made of denim, what else are jeans made of?
Well, you just have white. Right, different colors of jeans in there.
Well, they have like the skinny jeans now that are like the, the, the spandex.
Oh, yeah, that's true, okay.
Fall under excessive, uh, type thing, or something.
You have to follow the state's data.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, I wouldn't wear them to work, I agree. This looks good to me.
Very thorough.
It's fine, so.
Very thorough. Because that teacher's still wearing warmest, thank you.
Unless they teach health all day, that.
Well, just to get dressed for my health classes, I certainly would. Now I get a stand saying, Miss Kay, you're not wearing clothes today. I was like, I'm not, I'm in gym clothes. Would there be a type of shoe that would damage the new gym floor? Or is the gym floor pretty much solid?
Staff, kids are not on the windows, nails.
Does anybody have any questions on this? Because if not, I would like to, uh, to, to, to move on. Well, first I want to take a roll call on their policy in public relations to suspend policy zero-one-three-one that requires two readings of policy and adopt on first reading of the following manual. Everything that we just went over, the policies, and, um, we all, we have a motion made by Patty Smith, seconded by Naomi. Just need a roll call.
Ms. Derek?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Torillo?
Yes.
And Ms. Spalding?
Yes. At this time, um, the public, we are open for public comment on any items. Does anybody at this time have any public comment at this time? No? Okay, then, for the spe, the special policy meeting, I need a motion to adjourn.
Comment that motion.
Motion made by Lynn.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. All in favor?
All right.
I thought it was adjourned at seven, excuse me, six forty-eight?